The public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by telephone by using the call in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Kondo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Deputy City Manager Loveland, are there any responses to resident inquiry?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? No, all right. Public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, did anyone sign up tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, one individual signed up in advance, and that is Tom Lampo.
Welcome. Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
Hello to everyone. Hello to North Glenn. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way, and I'm here to lift up North Glenn in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we come before you and invite you here to be with us. You are always welcome here in the city of North Glenn. You are the Creator of all things, and we need your presence more than ever. We need you to guide and lead us in our daily lives. We need you to guide and lead our elected leaders at all levels to make sound decisions to move us in a direction which will enrich our lives. You see the future where no one else can, and your love for us has no limit. 2 Corinthians 1:3 reads, "Praise be to God, and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of compassion and the God of all comfort." You have compassion for us. You understand where we are. We can trust in your ways to guide us to a future where we can reside in all your blessings, which will bring peace to our lives. Father, it's a good time of year, and I want to lift up to you all those whose lives are about to change. Many are enjoying the last days of a well-earned break, the final vacations, the final summer camps, the final adventures. Freedom to spend time in a leisurely fashion. It's all given to us by you, Ecclesiastes 8:15 states, so I commend enjoyment, for there is nothing better for people under the sun than to eat and drink and enjoy themselves, for this will go with them in their toils through the days of life that God gives them under the sun. Give us strong lasting memories of enjoyable times with friends and family that we can take with us throughout our lives. Let these days be a marking in time in our lives, because inevitably, we will have not-so-enjoyable days ahead of us. Let us remember these days to bring joy back in our lives during the times when joy seems so far away. Praise, glory, and honor to you, oh Lord Jesus Christ. You are God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Is there anyone in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council tonight? Okay. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You can press *6 to unmute at this time. Okay, we're going to move on. We have an interview tonight, so I would like to invite Chris Kirkpatrick to come forward to be interviewed for a position on the Liquor Licensing Authority. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So you interviewed with the Liquor Licensing Authority on July 17th, and were recommended for appointment. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and what encouraged you personally to apply?
Okay, well, I was a paralegal at the county attorney's office in Boulder for 20-plus years, and one of my responsibilities was to review the liquor licenses. After the clerk had done her review, then she'd give it to us, and she was so thorough that we really didn't ever have any mistakes, but, you know. Anyway, so I'm really familiar with the beginning to the end process, and also the renewals, and then also the, you know, we would have the sheriff's department go and do stings periodically, and then revocations or requests for, you know, suspensions would come along. So that was the gamut, so it was pretty concise, and the rules, it's been 20 years since I've been doing that. The only reason I'm not there is because I got the West Nile virus that year, and I was sick and didn't know when I was going to feel well, so I resigned my position after about six months. Otherwise, I'd probably still be there. But, anyway, I just thought, now that the meetings are at 6 o'clock, that's a lot better for me schedule-wise, and I'd like to offer my, you know, experience and knowledge to the board, the Liquor Licensing Board.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kirkpatrick, for stepping forward. You know, I think it's really beneficial to have somebody that's kind of been there, done that, and looking at all the documentation and knowing end-to-end how the process works. So that's great, and I would imagine there's a very short learning curve for you, if not no learning curve. So again, thank you for coming forward and being part of the Liquor Licensing Authority.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for volunteering. I don't have any questions, but I like to congratulate and encourage all of our volunteers just because we really need you, we really depend on you to fill our boards and commissions, and your expertise looks like it's right in line with the Liquor Licensing Board, so thank you.
Yes, we seem to be a pretty easy interview panel because we're all just thanking you for your service, but you definitely have the experience and expertise, and thank you for taking the time.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me do this.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, first presentation tonight is the July Neighborhood Beautification Awards. I would like to invite counsel to join. Community Outreach Coordinator Jenna Gregg to present the Neighborhood Beautification Awards to residents for the month of July.
Well, hello, Madam Mayor, council members, and everyone else joining us this evening. My name is Jenna Gregg, and I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for the city. Thank you, counsel, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to present the awards for the North Glenn Neighborhood Beautification Program this evening. For those who don't know, and I know, counsel, you've heard this a few times, but we've got a few in the audience who've never heard this before. This program was established in 1998 to recognize residents who have done an outstanding job of keeping their homes and yards beautiful. The city is divided into eight separate areas, and then nominations are received from residents and neighbors throughout the community. We then have eight volunteer judges make their way through each street to determine that month's winners. Winners are then chosen in the months of June, July, and August to receive a large lawn sign to display for that month, and then council recognizes the winners here at the summer meetings. Winners receive a framed certificate and a keepsake garden sign. So the residents, North Glenn residents, can receive an award in the following categories. We have our Yard of the Month awarded to traditional yards with weed-free, well-kept lawns, healthy trees and flowers. And then our Waterwise Yard of the Month, which is awarded in accordance with our citywide water conservation efforts. These yards tend to use less turf, more water-tolerant plants, flowers, trees, and shrubs, and they also tend to include use of rock, mulch, and other landscaping materials. So without further ado, it is my pleasure to present the 13 July winners of our North Glenn Neighborhood Beautification Program. We have five winners in attendance this evening, so if you are one of those, please come on up when I announce your name and show the photo of your house. We'll take a photo with the mayor, council, and then after everyone has come up individually, we'll do a large group photo. So to start off, we have Jenny Tao at 10909 St. Paul Way. Jenny was not able to join us this evening, but let's celebrate her home. Next up, Mary and Sean Hunter at 11244 Claude Court. They also were unavailable to join us this evening. Let's celebrate their yard. Next up, and our first attendee in, first winner in attendance this evening, there we go, is Sydney and Garrett Batch at 11363 Humboldt Street. So Sydney and Garrett, come on up. That's your little bonus winner. Pretty impressive to keep your yard nice and have a newborn on my back. Gordon was not able to join us this evening. Next up, we have Aubrey and Antonio at 10521 Pennsylvania Street, and the judge in this area loved their, it's typically not a typical Yard of the Month, but the judge in this area loved two Waterwise Yards of the Month, so we had to celebrate this one this time. Yeah. All right, we do have a tall person. You guys are right, no, you're good. Stay where you are. Well, I'll move back. Shannon, I think I need you to come this way a little bit. One, two, three. Jody and, I'm sorry, council members, Kondo and, yeah, just a little bit, a little bit. There you go. One, two, three. Again. All right, one of these should work. Our next Yard of the Month goes to Coy Liu at 1443 West 111th Place. Coy was so sad he was not able to make it today. He was telling me his whole life story around this yard, so let's celebrate him even though he couldn't make it. Next up, we have Edith Melendez at 10416 Pompey Way. Edith was also unable to join us this evening. Next up, we have Richard Ortega at 10180 Melody Drive. Richard, come on up. Congratulations. I think the two of you need to shift. There you go. Yes, that way. Perfect. All right. Ready, one, two, and I have my camera upside down, I hate when I do that. All right, one, two, three. My old smile. All right, got it. And as we transition into Waterwise Yards of the Month, we have Fred and Kathy Shea at 11414 Claude Court. Fred and Kathy, come on up. Councilmember Kondo, just like half a step. Perfect. Wow, everybody looks great. Ready, one, two, three. You're welcome. Next up in Waterwise, we have Chad and Jennifer Walser at 11242 Ogden Drive. Come on up, Chad and Jennifer.
It's all the husband. He did it all.
And then, actually, Councilmember Goff, I'm going to make you go this way. All right. Everybody, ready, one, two, three. My old. All right, one of those should work. All right. The remaining of our winners were not able to join us this evening, so we'll just click right through and then do a group picture at the end. So next up, we have David and Judith Wilhelm at 1206 East 111th Place, and their neighbors nominated for them for this. They saw the work going into it, so the fountain, the mulch. Next up, we have Nadia Gonzalez at 10976 Pearl Street. Sorry, her. And last but certainly not least, we have Eduardo and Sylvia Moreno at 1164 West 101st So all of our winners who are here, if you could please join counsel and the mayor up at the front, we'll get one last group picture.
Okay, next up is a presentation by our Community Co-Production Policing Advisory Board, the Blue Envelope Program. So I'd like to welcome CCPP Board members Richard Volk and Joel Brown will present
My apologies for getting set up here. Thank you for having us, ladies and gentlemen, the council, Madam Mayor. What we've got here is really what I feel the primary goal of our board to do, which is to bridge between the citizens, the council, and the police department, and kind of create a joint communication. This was kind of a long time in the making. We went through a couple of iterations of maybe refrigerator magnets and that kind of thing, and it came out of an impetus to work with individuals that needed police or 911 assistance but didn't necessarily speak the language. And we went through some iterations, like I said, with some magnets and some flyers, and none of it really kind of hit home with us until Joel kind of found this program out of Boulder. It's called the Blue Envelope Program. And what I hold in my hand here is a sample that's going to be going live, and what this blue envelope is, is it's a place for emergency contact information, driver's license, vehicle registration, insurance, anything you may need in the event of a traffic stop. So if you get pulled over and you're in a fairly heightened/nervous state, and how I am right now, you can have one of these, or if you happen to have English as a second language, or autism, I think was the original start of this, with the color blue. This is a program that we're looking to roll out. Now, we kind of ran into a question of how else can we better communicate this, and at the traffic stop, there's an option also to adopt a sticker. And the sticker's kind of gone through some iterations as this program's grown, and we fell on really just the blue envelope, and have that sticker in a back window, or I believe it's a cling, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a sticker that can go on the vehicle, and, you know, we're excited about this program for a lot of different reasons. Like I said, with CCPV, we were trying to address the needs of the community, learned about the Blue Envelope Program, which is starting to gain popularity amongst all of Colorado. There's a lot of other agencies that have done this. So with that, it's starting to be more recognized through all the law enforcement communities. So we created a video that'll help educate the public, but it is that. So if a law enforcement officer has contact, and, you know, we want to expand it not just on a traffic stop, but even in a private residence, there's communication, you know, difficulties that are apparent because of whatever mistrust or, you know, just different disabilities. This is a way to, you know, bridge that gap, slow people down and say, hey, I have some special needs here, and that's what this is, is on a traffic stop or in home, we see this, it's kind of, I don't like talking, but there's some information in here that gives law enforcement that opportunity to slow things down and kind of see what, how we can better communicate with that person or meet their needs. A lot of times, it's just providing additional information for a medical information or emergency contact. So it was neat that this program's, you know, statewide because our neighbors are running it, they have blue envelopes in their car, and they drive into our community to do business, and they get, you know, contact with our law enforcement. It should be that nationally recognized program, and vice versa. You know, our residents go outside to another community, they have law enforcement contact, and they're on this Blue Envelope Program, we can better, you know, communicate with them. You know, I think another great aspect of this is, you know, our ability to use our crisis response unit. They have the time, and they deal with a lot of people that can benefit from this Blue Envelope Program, and what I like about it is they have the time to sit down and they can custom-make what can go in this envelope, so they can really tailor what special needs, you know, if it's a foreign language, or medications, or therapists, or hospital information, we can get this information in that envelope, and this will just speed up the process and be able to provide a better customer service to people we interact with.
Great detail, and thank you for bringing up the video. I haven't seen this, and unfortunately, I'm on it, so this is going to be really awkward, but with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and roll that video if we could. Is that ready?
Oh, I'm embarrassed. I didn't know this was going to happen.
I know, we didn't tell you on purpose.
I wouldn't have been here.
Hi. We're members of the North Glenn Community Co-Production Policing Advisory. We're members of the North Glenn Community Co-Production Policing Advisory Board, a bridge between the broader community and law enforcement.
We work to strengthen the relationships between residents and officers through trust, transparency, and shared solutions.
One of those solutions is the Blue Envelope Program, a new idea during traffic stops.
And it's one more way we're working together to build a stronger, more connected community.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Joel Brown, the North Glenn Police Department. I'm here to tell you about the Blue Envelope Program. It's designed to promote safer interactions between law enforcement and individuals who may have communication challenges or conditions that aren't immediately visible. This could include difficulty processing verbal instructions, sensory sensitivities, or feeling overwhelmed in high-stress situations. When officers see the blue envelope, it's a signal to slow down, be clear, and give the driver a little extra time or space. It's a simple step that makes a big difference in keeping everyone safe and comfortable. The program encourages drivers to place a copy of their driver's license, vehicle registration, and insurance card inside the blue envelope. Additionally, some participants may include emergency contact information or specific instructions for law enforcement to aid in communication during the stop. Hi, I'm Sergeant Joel Brown, the North Glenn Police Department. Great, thank you, ma'am, I'll be right back, okay? North Glenn Police Department also provides optional stickers. These can be placed in a vehicle window to let officers know that someone inside may benefit from a different communication approach. There's no need to register or share personal information. This program is completely voluntary and is designed to promote safety for both parties involved in the interaction.
Thanks, Sergeant Brown. This program is about making North Glenn safer and more inclusive for everyone.
If you think the Blue Envelope Program could benefit you or someone you know, Blue Envelopes and stickers are available at North Glenn City Hall and the North Glenn Justice Center.
I intend to be a one-and-done with that. I can hire a professional next time.
Do you guys have any questions?
Well, before we jump to questions, I did want to say, this is the placard that we're looking to have in the main lobby. I think it's going to go up tomorrow. The envelopes are there, the stickers are there, as well as some instructions, so that's what we've got. So if there's any questions, we'd love to field them.
Great. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well done, gentlemen. Really, I think this is a wonderful program. My question is, I represent the city with North Metro Fire. I noticed at the bottom here, it says that this program will alert first responders. Is North Metro Fire kind of, have they been briefed on this so that they know that there's perhaps important information if they come across somebody that is in a car accident, not able to respond?
Not officially through us, but, you know, I know there's been a lot of communication through, actually, Nine News, I believe, shared a story back January, February. A lot of the other communities are adopting this, so good point to reach out then directly and share this information, but I think as a community, I think a lot of this information is starting to be more known and should be recognized, hopefully, but good point. I can definitely reach out to the members of North Metro Fire.
Yeah, well, and thank you for that. I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to tag on to that of, it wasn't just Joel and I, it was our entire board, and we couldn't have done it without the assistance of the great city staff here. So I wanted to say thank you to Holly, who's smartly hiding in the back, but she's been invaluable in creating this program with us, and really, we wanted to get this rolled out internally first, so we had one run with this previous, and then we figured our next stop needed to be here with the city and council.
Gotcha, thank you. And then, just a note, I did sit in on one of your board meetings, I think it was about a month ago or two months ago, and really appreciate all the hard work that you all do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's not a question, but I just wanted to, again, thank you. This program was presented to the diversity board last month, or last week at their last meeting, and the diversity board is more than willing to help coordinate or support any kind of a program that you guys come up with. And just again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't feel we own this program, we want to get this spread out throughout boards and city officials.
Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been a long time coming, and I know the board worked really hard on this, and I think this is a great example of bridging the gap between all three entities, you know, the community, the police department, and, you know, council, we're kind of just like here, but like, this is a really great opportunity to help build trust in the community, so I really appreciate this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. I know it's been a long road.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excellent work. I mean, this really adds weight to the term "North Glenn Proud." I'm super proud of our police department, super proud of our board, and really working to make this happen. I've heard about this program in other cities, I believe every municipality should have this program. And as the mother of an adult child that has high-functioning autism, I know firsthand how important a program like this is. And sometimes I think it's difficult with law enforcement, right, to understand what somebody's baseline is. And if that baseline is different because of a disability or a language barrier, I think this is incredibly important to, you know, to ease that communication. So I just want to say thank you. And then my question is, is are there plans to be at our ward meetings? We have our Ward Four meeting this Thursday. I know last year CCPP Board was there, so I'm just curious if that's another way to get this, the word out for this program.
I can speak for Ward Four, I will be there on Thursday. It will be a smaller presence, we won't necessarily be doing the popcorn and the whole booth again.
Pummer.
Maybe that's something we should reconsider in the next 72 hours.
I love popcorn.
But, thank you, I appreciate that. And I guess I'll take that as an invite to come with the popcorn this time, so.
Always, with or without the popcorn. We love having you there. I know Councilmember Roper probably feels the same way. So thank you for this program, this is so important. I'm super proud of this work.
Thank you. Sorry, Joel.
You're good.
Well, thank you. You both did quite well on camera. And, no, I think the video is really great. I think my question might be more for our comms team as far as how can we get this information out as broadly as possible? Because I know our North Glenn PD social sites get some traction, but not a lot of people follow the police department's social media, right? And so I'm sure we're going to also double down and put it on the city page, but I'm hoping Director Wilson, maybe we can, like, get it out more often? Yeah, if you could come on up. Not more often, more broadly. How do we reach every resident?
So first of all, I want to give some props to the police department because they have more Facebook followers than us. Not by much, but a little.
Really? That's good to know.
But it is two different audiences, so we'll share everything that they share, but I think the best tactic that they have is to work with Crew, because they work with an audience that would be especially helped by this program. So we'll definitely try and do some direct, hey, this is how we do it, and then we'll put it out on all the city channels, including an article in the connection with instructions on if you think you would like to participate in this program, how to get in contact with people so that you can get it. Because it isn't like we're just going to hand out envelopes. I think we're going to make sure that the people who need them have them, so we'll outline that process in the connection, as well as all the rest of our platforms.
Okay.
If you want to talk about our New Mayor's Monthly Minute, I'm sure PD would love it.
I think that's a great idea, actually, but also, I'm wondering if we space it, right, and we hit it again in a few months and maybe put it, can we, I don't know the exact cost over there, my friend with the money, but the, if we could put it in the, like, the water bills or other things, just to get the word out, because I know our Crew team, they're going to hit, you know, immediate need, but I can think of a lot of neighbors I have that may miss this information but could absolutely benefit from it.
Then I'll work with Jamie, maybe we do a periodic thing where we're like, hey, every couple months, we need to get something out, and maybe we could kind of freshen up the campaign to get different attention each time.
Will it be on our website in some way?
Yes, it will be on their website.
Okay, that's great. I just, very impressed with the program. Thank you for bringing it forward. CCPP is doing really, really amazing work in the committee, in the community, so don't discount that. I love that you're willing to share some of the accolades, but you guys are doing really, really good work.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, our third presentation tonight is the Adams County IGA for Graffiti Management. We have an update. Director of Public Work Sarah Borgers is here to present. Good evening.
Awesome. It's good to see all of you. I haven't been here in a few weeks, so it's good to be back and hanging out with y'all. Tonight, we have a presentation to just do an overview on the IGA that we signed with Adams County for them to help support us in graffiti management. Spoiler alert, it's going very well. I think we've got a presentation. Awesome. All right, so before I forget, we do have a couple of our friends from Adams County here with us today. We have Stacy Moslett, Katie Burcheck, and Ryan Dodge, and Ryan's going to share some stats with us here later on. Relatively short presentation. So we're doing an update on the IGA to talk about the proactive graffiti removal that Adams County has been helping us with. So the goal of the graffiti program is to provide a regional approach to graffiti cleanup through proactive patrolling and efficient graffiti response. It's been successful. Ryan here goes and combs through the city frequently, including some hotspots that he'll talk about here, and tries to cover up those, that graffiti before we even get a CRM or we get any response. In that regard, from the CRM perspective, we have seen a substantial reduction in the number of graffiti notes we've gotten through the CRM system. The first month that Adams County was helping us was in May. In May of last year, we got 39 CRMs. This year, we only got eight. So pretty, pretty big change in experience for our residents. So just briefly on the program, waivers are still needed for private property owners. Adams County does handle that, so that doesn't go through us anymore. The county's not technically obligated to match colors, but Ryan is very excited about it, and he prides himself in doing a good job with that. Hours, 8:00 AM through 4:30, Monday through Friday, except holidays. Response time is five business days, but we've been seeing quite a bit faster than that. So the process from the city's perspective is residents can still submit their graffiti concerns through our CRM system. We then take that and send that to Adams County, and Adams County then responds to it. Once we get a notification or we see the little dot pop up on the dashboard that you'll see in a second, we will close that CRM. We had a little bit of a hiccup at first where we closed some CRMs before he had actually gone out and cleaned the graffiti, so we've corrected that, that issue. So we send the graffiti request to Adams County, and then Adams County staff addresses the issue promptly, and then we close the CRM. All right, so I'm going to let Ryan Dodge come up and speak a little bit about the stats.
Hi, thank you for having us. So we'll go with the cases first. So May, the first month, we started in the middle of the month, so I tried to cram 40 hours into two weeks. Basically, I got like 35 and came away with 226 cases. Last month, down to 132, and after today, we're at 66 for July. So it's, it is dropping. The hotspots are definitely the parks and trails, particularly the skate park area at the Rains Park. For a while, that was getting hit pretty much nightly. Little areas one time, the next time you'd go, and all four pillars are hit, the ceilings hit, the bowls in the skate park are hit, all the light poles are hit. That was happening pretty frequently at the beginning, and that's really slowed down a lot. I did remove one today from one of the pillars at the pavilion up there. But overall, it's really slowed down, which is nice. One crew, I don't know who they were, the big bowl out there, they did the entire thing. So we got that cleaned up, took a couple hours, looks great now, and since then, it's really slowed down. I think it's just, they see me every day, there's a lot of different people around there, and the people that are tagging, it's not staying up. When it happens, it's usually one person, maybe two. For an example, like July 3rd, I did 10 cases in North Glenn, nine of them were at the skate park. Seventeenth, 13 cases, 11 of them were at the skate park. And even going back to last month, like, the 26th, there were 17 cases, and almost all those were at the skate park or the trail behind it, like the utility boxes. So that's really the heavy area getting hit. The tunnel under Washington gets hit quite a bit, and then the tunnel under the H-line. And in the beginning, the cases or the complaints we were getting sent were really those four areas. So now, every day that I'm here, I hit those four areas, and I think that's a big reason why the cases have dropped, because we're going every single day to those four areas and then hitting everything we can in between. Next slide. So this is the overall county at 306 and below, kind of a mixture of you guys and, I think, sorry, and Fed Heights. Wish we could zoom in farther, I'm sorry, but in there, you can, as you zoom in and zoom in, you can see there's a corner at 120th and Washington, those businesses, that has quite a bit, but it hasn't really been re-hit, that was all in the first, like, two weeks, because every dumpster was hit, every light pole was hit, but it hasn't been re-tagged. Overall, through North Glenn, very few utility boxes are getting re-hit. There are some, I did three today, actually, that all said Rest in Peace Somebody, and they were right next to each other. So little things like that, but it's not like a mass hit that's happening anymore. And then, trying to think of another area. So everybody knows, Washington and Garland, there's a bus stop by the Walmart, there's a tag on their window that I cannot get off. I've tried everything possible, so short of taking the window out, which we can't do, that's why it's still there, but trust me, I've tried. So if anybody sees that one, it drives me crazy that, I don't know what they used, I think they, like, etched it with, like, a chemical or something, but I did try. But other than that, yeah, it's slowing down. I feel like I'm in a good routine of where I need to hit. Portujans are another area that could hit a lot at the parks. Probably 25, 30 of the removals have been porta-potties that I've done, so those do get hit, but that's pretty common everywhere.
All right. No, this is great, thank you. So the link, if you go on the website, I think, is live, if you want to click on it, it's a, that's a fun little active map that you can look and see what's happened today. So one last thing we wanted to cover before we turn it over for questions is offensive graffiti. This is a topic that's come up a couple of times, especially with some recent events that have happened. So Adams County really only notifies us if there's, like, a specific threat. They're really focusing their time on actively getting the graffiti down. That said, we have had discussions with them, and if there is a specific need, if we're seeing a specific threat, if we're seeing a specific tag, that if we would like for them to spend more time and see, they take pictures of all of the graffiti that they clean before they clean it. If we want them to go back and look and see if there's something going on, that that's something that they can help us with, we would just pay an hourly cost for doing that With that, happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Heralio.
Thank you, Mayor Leidy. I want to thank Adams County, you guys have been doing a wonderful job. I've noticed a timely, you know, removal of graffiti lately, and it's been, even before I could report some of it, sometimes it's already gone. I'll drive by and say, oh, I'm going to go back and report that one, and it's already taken care of. So I want to thank you. I've noticed, you know, at the commercial buildings too, like you mentioned on 120th and Washington, there's a lot less graffiti there, you've mentioned on the dumpsters and things like that. And I also really like this, this map on the website, that link, so you can really pinpoint areas, and I can see, it definitely does coincide with places that I've been reporting, especially around Ward Two where I, where I live. So I've noticed a great change. We, I mean, staff was doing a great job before, but
They're knocking it out of the park.
They're, they're doing a wonderful job, and I want to give you props, and I'm very impressed. Keep it up.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep.
Councilmember Kondo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really intrigued by the comment you made about around the Anima Skate Park and how you're kind of staying on top of that. It sounds like the takers slash perpetrators are actually watching you take it down. Did I hear that correctly?
It's speculation, but it happens so frequently, and there's always people there that I think word travels.
Okay.
Whether it's people seeing me removing graffiti and they're talking to their friends about it, or the people that actually tagged it, they come back and it's gone the next How it actually works, you know, I don't think, know that there's, like, direct communication, but I think just the word spreads, people see it gets cleaned up. Today, there was, like, eight kids there when I went up and just started painting the pillar. So those kids saw me removing graffiti, I talked to them, so that's going to spread, and I think that's what's been happening, why it's been reducing, even though at first there was a ton of it there.
Mm-hmm. I like the fact that you're having an interaction with the youth, so that they're understanding that there's time, money, energy, and resources being spent on it, and it's not, it's not a constructive way of expressing, perhaps. And I do like your website here where you do have the numbers, which is very impressive. And it would be interesting to see different snapshots over time to see if the numbers actually do trend downward. I don't know if you have that feature on your, on your portal. Nope, and here we go. Yes.
Yes, we have a dedicated data team within our department, but you can see that for sure if you look at other cities. So if you were to look at Westminster or Federal Heights, they've been with us for a couple of years, that they do trend down. There are, you know, these one-off instances where there'll be a group, and there is right now, they're just not hitting North Glenn, so you can be thankful to that. But there is a group that's going through most of Adams County that's kind of, we've seen an uptick in some of the graffiti, but over, you know, four years that Ryan's really been targeting and being proactive about removal, they go down, which is why we're always confident when we get in front of councils that, yes, it will go down, and it will consistently stay down as long as we're proactive.
Gotcha, thank you. Yeah, it sounds like the broken windows theory. My last comment, I suppose, is that Adams County, as many people know, it's just really wide. It's 76 miles wide, so I'm impressed to see that you do have a couple dots there in Strasburg and Watkins, so you must have quite a bit of windshield time.
And those came in from sheriffs, would report those, is how we knew. We don't proactively drive out there, but that's how we find out about those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. Thank you for this update, we really appreciate it. I like how the trend is moving, for sure, and thank you for your hard work and for the collaboration.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up, communications. I will start with Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a minute, but I don't have too much to report, so.
Not right now, no. There is another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. I'm not sure, I can't tell you how long each agenda item is going to take. Oh, okay. We can turn him up, that's good feedback. So, public comment is?
An hour, two hours, anything?
I, maybe an hour, maybe an hour and a half, I'm not sure. Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, obviously CCPP, we had a great presentation on the Blue Envelope, an outstanding program. Um, so obviously CCPP, we had a great presentation on the blue envelope, um, an outstanding program. Um, there's also been discussion around like what are the continued touchpoints they're going to do this year? So I think bringing up the popcorn and neighborhood nights for next year is a good idea. Um, we had our, a special ledge committee meeting where we, um, are discussed, we will be interviewing three potential lobbyist candidates on the 11th. And we're also tracking the special, summer special sessions coming down the pipe. So if anything comes out of that, we will let you know. Um, thank you to staff, we had an amazing AdCog dinner. Um, that was really great. Um, shout out to Jessica Holes and crew for her amazing presentation, um, and talking about, you know, sort of county collaboration. Um, and congratulations to everyone who won. My neighbors, I can't believe they didn't win Waterwise, who did all the, not, the, um, pollinator plants in their backyard, so, yeah. But thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to say thank you, Tom Lampo, for his kind, kind words as always. And also a great job to CCPP board on their new program and I hope it goes well.
Thank you. Councilmember Hara Mio.
Thank you, Mayor Lighty. Um, I attended the AdCog dinner and meeting here at, uh, City Hall. That was on Wednesday, the 23rd. It was great to, uh, connect with our neighbors, um, you know, Westminster, Broomfield, Thornton, Adams County. Um, good to see the representatives here, um, and really get into, uh, uh, just get down to some really good conversations I would need to have, uh, in our area. Um, and then on Thursday morning, uh, July 24th, I attended the NADA meeting. That's the North Area Transportation Alliance. And, uh, will be presenting for, uh, CDOT pretty soon. That's the Colorado Department of Transportation. Will be doing a few, uh, presentations for them very soon. And then that evening, we had the Ward Two Neighborhood Meeting at, uh, Carl's Farm. And it was a, one, it was attended really well and, uh, staff did a great job, uh, putting on the event. Um, the band was great. Uh, it was just really good to see, uh, the, the new residents here in North Glenn at Carl's Farm. And, you know, meeting everybody and, yeah, it was really great. And, uh, I'm just saying that was probably one of the highlights of the summer for me. That was a wonderful time. Um, other than that, that's, that was my past couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nowiki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so on this previous week, I had the opportunity to attend the North Glenn Senior Organization Board Meeting. A couple of announcements there, the financial assistance program is up. Um, so this is a program designed to assist senior residents, uh, with emergency cash needs that can, uh, cannot be met by existing resources. You can access it on the city website, northglenn.org/seniors. Um, a couple of other things, um, Friday is the, this Friday is the Ice Cream Social and all seniors are welcome at 1:00 PM. Uh, you can call the Senior Center to sign up. Uh, Friday, August 15th is the Senior Celebration. It is dropping from 2:00 to 4:00. Uh, they'll have live music, dancing, food, resources, prizes. Um, and you can just kind of get a tour of this, what the Senior Center is all about. Um, Tuesday, I did have the opportunity to attend the opening of the Arden at Carl's Farm. Um, it's the apartments right there behind the QT. Um, so it was really, uh, really nice celebration. It was, uh, kind of a long time coming, but it was great to kind of meet some of the residents that have moved in there. And they're looking to, you know, get the, the rest of them kind of online and, and get folks in there. It was a good opportunity, um, again, to meet the residents and meet some of the staff that worked there as well. And I want to say, thank the city and the city staff. Um, you know, I heard comments about the city was really easy to work with in, in the process. So kudos to the city staff for, for streamlining that. Um, and then as Councilmember Hara Mio said, uh, the Ward Two Neighborhood Nights, it was fantastic. Um, my, my kids, well, I don't know if my baby loved it, but my kids loved it. Um, the four-year-old had a blast, uh, got to, uh, you know, dance around and play with all the other kids. Um, it, the weather was beautiful, it was a great turnout, the band. I got to meet a bunch of different folks from Carl's Farm. Got a lot of feedback that they were, they were, uh, very grateful, very excited that it was kind of held there, that there hadn't really been many opportunities to kind of connect and that was the hope. Um, so it was great to, to do that. And I really want to thank all the residents that came out, uh, the city staff showed up strong. Um, and I really appreciate that, uh, everyone that was out there was, it was just a great evening and a great way to celebrate just community. And like Councilmember Hara Mio said, probably a highlight of the summer as well. Um, so thank you again to everybody, um, that was there. And lastly, I want to thank my neighbors Kathy and Fred Shea for, uh, for, uh, doing such a great job with your yard. You're an inspiration to me. Fun fact, Fred is always out there kind of raking those rocks and doing all that and it's. Yeah, yeah. Um, so it's, uh, again, I think it's an opportunity, you know, he really does a good job of taking care of his yard and takes, takes pride, yeah, in, in his yard and is really an inspiration to me. So I, I really appreciate you guys and you guys are the best neighbors I can think of, so thank you. Um, I think that is all for me, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so July 17th was, um, Ward Three Neighborhood Nights, the first one. Very well attended, um, the, the band was great, the, the movie was fun, the weather was good, it was windy. But I also wanted to thank the staff, um, because there were, there were a lot of people there helping out and I think it was a huge success. Um, thank, thank all the residents that came too. Um, and then on July 22nd, uh, we had a meeting here at City Call, City Hall, um, with a team that had put together the Juneteenth event. And we were, uh, you know, sort of just talking about what worked well and what, uh, what could be improved for ne, and already planning for next year. So, um, I'm hoping that that will come back bigger and better. Uh, also on that same, later that same day, um, the Diversity, Inclusivity and Social Equity Board met. Um, and we had a presentation from, uh, interim Deputy Chief Rice on, uh, the North Glenn Immigration Policy, uh, because the board felt they needed some real, some good clarity on, on, you know, where we are, where we stand with that. Um, the Dice Board has printed out, um, some little cards that are kind of like know your rights as a, uh, immigrant. And those have been, um, passed out in different places throughout the city. We also got to see the Blue Envelope Program presentation, so that was fun. Um, and then we did get an update on the Odell Berry Park. And, uh, the, the Parks Department is writing gra, uh, grants and is requesting anyone who, uh, could or be, show some interest or be willing to write a letter of support for that park. Um, the deadline for letters is August 15th. You could email it or actually, you know, write a real letter if you want, that works too. Um, and you would be sending it to jemastrovic@northglenn.org. Um, and if anyone, you know, has any further questions about that, you can ask me. I think it'll be in the next connection with information on that as well. So I just wanted to, um, do, give a heads, heads up on that. Uh, and then, and then just to acknowledge our staff for all the hard work to make the Adams County, uh, Council of Governments Dinner a big success that we had here. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I will, uh, pile on on Councilmember Nowiki's comment about the Arden Carl's Farm opening, which was attended by, uh, you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, uh, Councilmembers Roper, Dr. Goff, and of course, um, our city manager Heather Geier. Uh, I, I am impressed. I, uh, I grew up in this city and in the seventies when Carl's Farm was Carl's Farm. And I just remember going into the dairy, the refrigerator to pick up the, the cottage cheese or the eggs or the milk. And it, standing now in the current development, it almost gives you the sense that you're almost in downtown Denver, which is kind of weird. It's a weird sort of dissonance feeling when you've seen the farm and now you're in this place that has really, uh, some of the residual themes and accents of, and I think it does homage to Carl's Farm. So it was very well done. And the opportunity to speak with some of the new residents that have moved in, some have come from Thornton, Arvada, other places. And the reason why they come is because it's such a great central location, uh, kind of like the Oriole Cookie, you know, where the sweet spot between Westy and Thornton. And so that's, that was really nice to be a part of that. Again, kudos to staff, as, as mentioned previously, for making it easy, very easy for the developer. And I think that, that could be really, uh, informative, I suppose, as we think about future development opportunities. Uh, my last two comments have to do with customs and traditions of the fire service. Uh, last week, Chief Ramos had his walk-off. It's kind of like a sign-off of your last act of duty, although he, he will be retiring here, um, this mo, this week here on the 31st. So that was attended by Mayor Protem and, uh, City Manager Geier. Uh, very, very nice ceremony. And if you, you and members of the Dice have time, there is what is called a Change of Command Ceremony, which will take place at Station 61, uh, in Broomfield on the 31st at 10:00 AM. So if you would like to see the transfer, the orderly and, and very calm, peaceful transfer of total authority and power between one chief to another, uh, this would be a great opportunity for you to do that. Get to meet our new fire chief, if you haven't already met him, Chief Doggity. Um, and so again, that is going to be on, uh, the 31st, 10:00 AM, Station 61, which is off of Midway Drive in Broomfield. That concludes my remarks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm not going to spend too much time repeating what everyone else attended. Um, but I also attended the Arden, um, the Arden Apartment Grand Opening at Carl's Farm. It was wonderful. Um, while I do miss the original farm, it, it's wonderful to see, um, what they've done with the property. Also attended the AdCog Dinner and as many of my colleagues have said, it was wonderful to be able to connect with other leaders and our, um, communities around us. And then on Thursday night, we have our Ward Four Neighborhood Nights, maybe with popcorn? Maybe, but we will be showing Paddington and Peru, which is a darling movie, and having some yummy food and, um, just enjoying some time with our community. So we hope to see you there. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, since I'm almost last, I attended pretty much everything everybody attended, so I won't repeat that. I think there was one thing that wasn't mentioned so far besides AdCog. Thank you, staff. Um, ledge committee, thank you, Councilmember Burns. Uh, the walk-offs, which were really incredible to attend. And then, um, I will say one thing about the Arden Apartments, they are so beautiful. And they actually have a pet spa, which I thought was incredible, with little steps for the puppies to go in. And not two hours after we attended that grand opening, my dog got skunked. So I was really, really wishing for something like that. That would have been helpful, but, um, anyway, just beautiful, beautiful apartments. Um, other than that, I, let me see, I know there's one thing, okay. On the 16th, I attended the State of the Cities, um, event for the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce. Um, and the theme was economic development. And I was, uh, privileged to be a facilitator, along with Councilmember Condo was also a facilitator there as well. Um, and our own mayor was one of the panelists. And I know she'll report on that, so I won't, I won't give too much away. Um, but it was just incredible to see North Glenn up there with the mayor of Aurora and the mayor of Denver. So she was sitting with the bigwigs and, um, and I just have to say, I was very proud she represented us very well. Um, and I met some really cool people at my table, all from Denver, all from the City of Denver Economic Development Department. And, um, see you on Thursday at our award meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I was gonna kick it off with, um, the event that happened on the 16th. I won't get too far into it, it was a little bit of a crazy panel. Um, but it was an incredible opportunity to talk to hundreds of business leaders and community members about the impact that our economy is having on business leaders. And ultimately, my, my purpose and point was to make sure that small cities and small businesses were represented. Because yes, we were hearing a lot from Denver about big businesses like United and the impact that that big corporation has on the city. However, we know that small cities actually do a lot of the work. We're, we're trudging up the hill and we're making an impact and we're closest to our communities. And so it was great to represent. And also thank you to Councilmember Condo and, and Mayor Protem for being there and being table discussion leaders. It was nice to have, um, some, some friends in the crowd. It was, it was a, it was, it was a 30-minute block of time that was a little wild. Um, so a couple of things that I wanted to share tonight. I don't know if any of you have read the news about, uh, the former mayor of Golden, Mayor Marjorie Sloan. She was the mayor from 2012 to 2020 and she passed away recently and her memorial is on Saturday. Um, just a, a great human being, a lovely leader. She was really a mentor to other mayors in the region. She was part of Metro Mayor's Caucus, but also just anybody in city leadership. She was willing to meet and talk to you and mentor you in such a friendly way. She was definitely an inspiration, so our heart goes out to her family. Um, let's see here. Oh, the AdCog Dinner, the only piece I wanted to add to that aside from, it is such a valuable moment of regional collaboration. I love to hear from other cities in Adams County about what they're focused on, what's happening in their spaces. But I wanted to give a, a shout out to Jessica Holes. She was the, the presenter and she is truly, she is, you know, part of our crew team and she is truly a leader in the region. And it was lovely to see her showcased in that way so that everyone else could recognize she's going first in some really hard work and her expertise was really appreciated. Uh, let's see here, oh. So, uh, Councilmember Nowiki, you had mentioned your neighbors, your wonderful neighbors that are still here. And you had mentioned some characteristics of what made them good neighbors. And that's been on my mind a lot. Saturday, I attended this event called the Mile Long Table. It was down on the Araria campus. There were over 3,400 people that all had lunch at the exact same time. This beautiful, long, long, long table. And there were so many sponsors and it was just a beautiful event. Longertables.org put it on. And the Mile Long Table was America's longest table, which is very cool. Um, they will be doing it again, August 1st, 2026, for Colorado's 150th birthday. So I look forward to that. But Longer Tables, I really would love our council to take a peek. So if you just go to longertables.org, I was really inspired by their values and their mission. Their tagline says cultivating humanity through connection and belonging. And the facilitation of the Longer Table was really fun. You were, you were encouraged not to talk about work. And there were, uh, and you were also encouraged not to sit with whoever you attended with. So everyone kind of split up and you sat next to someone you did not know. And it was a guided conversation, um, family-style serving. It was really a lovely experience. And so I got inspired and I know we're not adding things to the strategic plan right now. I just want to put a bug out there for council to take a peek. And if in the future someday, North Glenn could have a Longer Table event, I think that would be really beautiful. So, small little plug, not asking for it in 2025 or 2026. Um, but as I lead into that or finish, wrap up with that, I want to give a plug for National Night Out. That is next week. And so if you haven't already learned about that, um, please look into that. We have some information on our website. It is sponsored primarily by the Police Department, encouraging our neighbors to start talking to each other. I did want to let council know that I made a change for the first time. And instead of riding around and party hopping with all of you, I'm gonna host in my own neighborhood. So I'm excited about that. We've had new residents move in and we really just need, need some joy, need some, some time together. So I'm looking forward to that. And just a thank you to North Metro Fire for being a huge participant in that as well and for our PD for putting it on. That is all I have. City Clerk Small, do you have any updates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two items tonight. The first one is I wanted to report that the City Clerk's Office held our third Passport Day Event of the year. And that was this past Saturday, July 26th. Staff helped 45 applicants and their families who couldn't make it in during the week. That day also kicked off our next donation drive. And so we are currently providing a free passport photo for anybody who brings in a non-perishable food donation. And those donations will benefit the Good Shepherd Food Bank. We are accepting donations through August 31st. And I want to thank the Communications Department and the Department of Parks Culture, Recreation and Culture for partnering with us. and the Department of Parks, Culture, Recreation, and Culture for partnering with us to provide donation bins at the recreation center. So that makes donating easy for folks who aren't visiting City Hall for services. And then the other item is just a quick informational piece about the November 4 election this year. Nomination petition forms are available to anybody who's interested in getting their name on the ballot. Those will be available on Monday, August 4 in the City Clerk's Office. They're then due back to the City Clerk's Office no later than August 25. And more information about that process is available in the candidate guide, which can be picked up in the City Clerk's Office or viewed online on the city's website. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Loveland?
Good evening. I have no updates. Thank you.
City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I too have nothing to report this evening.
Great. Well, thanks for being here. All right, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent passes unanimously.
Moving to resolutions, CR 66. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution adopting employee guidelines for the City of North Glenn, Colorado.
Move for approval?
All right, we'd like to welcome Director of Human Resources and Chief Diversity Officer Tamara Dixon to provide a summary of tonight's item.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Leidy. Counsel, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Excuse me if I cough. I'm getting over an illness. But I am here to request approval for three employee handbook items this evening. In January of this year, council approved our most recent edition of our handbook, and since that time, we have reviewed and found the need to revise two of our policies. And we are also requesting the addition of a new policy this evening. So first, we have updated the language in our inclusion code of conduct policy, and so that policy aligns with House Bill 25-1312, which is protection for transgender individuals. So if the code is approved as updated, that would prohibit misgendering as well as dead naming. Second, we have updated the language in our pets in the workplace policy. As written, it did lead to some confusion for employees, so we have reworded it a bit, just to make sure that employees understand that it is aligned with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And lastly, we are asking for the addition of a weapons in the workplace policy. That policy clarifies that possession or use of a firearm, whether that firearm is concealed or not, is prohibited on city policy. The policy would apply to all employees, with the exception of our sworn officers, and it also does not apply to weapons that would be secured in a personal vehicle that are parked on city property. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Dixon? Okay. Thank you. Very clear and precise. We appreciate it. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 66 passes unanimously.
CR 70. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado regarding the Colorado Universal Preschool Program.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, we'd like to welcome Recreation Manager Justin Perdue to provide a summary of the item. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. As mentioned in the memorandum, I'm here seeking approval for the city manager to execute the intergovernmental agreement. As is outlined in the memo as well, the state of Colorado has moved forward with requiring a formal agreement, an IGA, in place with each of those partners for the universal preschool program. That program has expanded exponentially over the past few years since its inception, and they work with Google Forms. So in order to really effectively move through that process, we are seeking to have City Manager Geier partner with our Children's Programs Coordinator, Cara Hockaday, to go ahead and really move forward with the agreement that you see as essentially outlined in that sample IGA. It would be specific to us as an agency, however, but very similar in nature. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the program itself, the history and how we performed, and partnered with the state of Colorado, or anything else of that nature.
Any questions? Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for presenting. I guess my question, first of all, this is a great program, but given some of the challenges that the state is facing, I wonder if there is any risk of the state pulling back on their funding, and would that result in any financial overhang for us?
The state has not indicated thus far that they have any inclination as to unfunding the program. I think that it's been a priority, certainly, as we've seen with affordable childcare being a necessity. So we have not heard anything.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you for presenting tonight and for continuing all the good work for the preschool program.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 70 passes.
I will now recess the regular city council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Haramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Harmeel?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14 meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the July 14 Marijuana Licensing Authority minutes pass unanimously.
Okay, we're looking at CR 73. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution making findings of fact in support of the decision to find good cause for nonrenewal of the medical marijuana center license and the retail marijuana store license of fresh organic LLC doing business as fresh cannabis.
Move for approval?
Thank you. City Attorney Hoffman will provide a summary.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of council. This findings of fact attempts to summarize the evidence you heard on July 14, 2025, and under the city's process to make those the findings of fact that result in nonrenewal of the liquor, or I'm sorry, of the marijuana license in this case. And in particular, the undisputed evidence was that the licensee did not have an entitlement to the licensed premise, and that that in and of itself is good cause for nonrenewal because they don't have possession of the licensed premise. So these findings of fact reflect that. They also reflect the issue of the licensee not showing up, contacting the city earlier in the day, but not seeking a continuance, although in the past, they had requested a continuance. So we know they knew that was an option and declined to seek any such continuance. So those findings of fact are reflected. If approved, this gets sent to the licensee as well as to the state to reflect that the council found good cause for nonrenewal based on the evidence presented at the July 14 hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for City Attorney Hoffman? Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 73 passes unanimously.
I will now adjourn the meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority and reconvene the regular city council meeting. So our final item tonight is public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment. Statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by council during the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council at this time?
I need more than three minutes.
Well, we have three minutes for tonight, so if you want to come to the podium, please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
My name is Karen Weinmeister. My address is 1945 East 116th Drive. I've lived there since 1969. Unfortunately, my next door neighbor is Patty Joslin. I'm sure the council all knows who Patty is. Is there anybody who doesn't? She's the one with the 104 animals that were found in her house with the two dead animals. My husband started complaining to the city of North Glenn in 1999 when he retired. For 26 years, I've had to live next door to this. I've had to be emotionally involved with all these animals. It's not fair. There have been hundreds of complaints to the city, and everybody has treated us like we're stupid, or we're lying, or we don't matter. And look what it came to. It's sad, and it's not fair that I've had to put up with this. I've not been able to have barbecues in my backyard. I've not been able to sit on my front porch and enjoy my own home. Company'd come over in the evenings because the smell has been bothering us for 26 years. Shame on the city of North Glenn. That started long before any of you, but shame on this city for allowing that to happen and for making us to have to suffer through all of this. I don't know what. Everybody tells me I should get an attorney. I don't know what to do. But I cannot, I can't even imagine what it's going to be like if they tear that house down. Officer Wormy, who's been the sweetest person, I don't know if you know how she's affected. Her lungs and everything, she could hardly talk when I talked to her. And I've had to smell it for 26 years. I don't know what to do. You tell me where I should go from here. I could tell you tons of things that have happened. This woman's invaded our privacy by standing on her patio roof on the back, taking pictures of us when my daughter and her boyfriend came, he came over, and he didn't care. He said they wanted to play yard games. She stands out there. The city says, oh, she has the right to take pictures. No, she doesn't. That's my privacy. That's my life. But nobody has cared. She can come out. She can swear at us, call us filthy, dirty names. Nobody cares. My life has been disrupted all these years. And the city of North Glenn owes me something. They owe me an apology. They owe me something. It's not fair that nobody has done anything in all these years. Guess my three minutes is up, but I have some notes here, things I wanted to talk about. Oh, I do want to address the issue of her trees. She's got these dead trees in the backyard that need to come down before they fall and kill somebody. She hopes they kill my son-in-law, her statement. But these trees are dangerous, and they're dead, and they need to have something done to them. Now that she's not there, somebody has to address the issue of what to do about those trees.
Okay. Can you leave your contact information with staff, please?
With who?
With staff. Our deputy city manager, Jason Loveland, for sure. And I am wondering, have you been in contact with our victim's advocate with the police department?
Nobody's told me anything. I don't know who to talk to. But I have truly been traumatized by this inability to sleep. There's dogs and cats. Well, the cats have been running around in that house. We've seen them through the windows for days, and, well, actually a week after the initial raid was made. And so you don't know what to do. These poor animals are in there. That house is so disgusting beyond belief. And so as an advocate, I would talk to...
I mean, I think it would be beneficial for you to talk to someone, for sure. I appreciate you coming tonight and letting us know. And I know that the city staff will follow up with you individually if you can leave your contact information. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to council? Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
My name is Sarah Banning. My address is 10241 Melody Drive. I received a violation today on my property of some weeds and trees, and I just wanted to make sure that the Neighborhood Services is, one, treating everybody in the neighborhood the same, but also that if I'm receiving a violation, that the trail that is, I'm assuming, publicly maintained by the city of North Glenn behind my house is treated the exact same way and is afforded the same violations and abatement restrictions because there are violations there that fall in line with what I was given, so.
Thank you for that information.
For sure.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that wants to speak? It's okay. No pressure. Okay. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.